Good evening, everybody. My name is Ryan Wagner and I am a fill-in today. The B team has arrived and I'm going to lead this meeting. Andy is under the weather today and not able to join us, so I will do my level best. The first thing I want to talk about is just give us kind of an overview of what's happening tonight. Here at 6 o'clock, we're going to start a work session, and that is different than a board meeting. So at the work session, the board has asked for certain updates and reports on kind of the numbers, what we're seeing, how things are going academically, et cetera. And so we have speakers coming to present to the board and provide us those updates. And obviously, we're glad you're all here to listen to those, too. Those will just be kind of, we'll run through the data. You know, to the extent the board has questions, we'll ask, ask questions we have, and then that session will adjourn. And then 10 minutes following that, we'll start a real board meeting, and that is where we'll have the public comments like we do at other sessions. So just to make sure we're all on the same page about kind of guidelines and what we're doing. Hopefully, this is a great and informative session. If there are things that you hear that trigger a comment later on, you can make sure to write those down, and then you can address it at the 7:00 meeting.
Hi, Ryan. Yes.
And Mr. Wertz is joining us by phone.
871...Matt? I'm not the tech guy, sorry. I think it's 317-346-8712. Yep, alright, thanks, bye. Alright.
Okay.
Thank you.
Director Clendenning.
Alright, thank you for coming. And yes, tonight, we're going to just give a COVID-19 update as we continue to live in this pandemic and how we do education and what's going on. With us tonight, we have our Director of Health Services, Amanda Martin, and then Dr. Warland, and we're going to share most of it. We also have our building principals. And if the board, just like in a typical work session, if there's questions for them, well, please ask them. They're ready to answer any questions. So the format for the presentations, we're going to talk just a little bit about what it's life like in school right now, especially for the nurses are going to start off, and Amanda is going to share that. And then we're going to talk about the numbers that we're seeing inside of our school and what our dashboard looks like, and then comment about learning loss, and then the Johnson County Health Commissioner, the Johnson County Health Department, and their latest update to COVID-19 for schools and how that could impact and play out for us. So, this is Martin.
Hi, well, thanks for having me tonight. So Dr. Clendenning asked me to give you some clinic updates, so we're going to start that with contact tracing. Contact tracing is definitely a stressor for us in the clinics. It's a very disruptive part of our day, as well as our students and our families. A few things I want to take note about contact tracing is that we've noticed that there is obviously a loss of in-person learning for our students when we have to trace them. And there's a lot of stress and anxiety that it creates for our families, for our teachers, for our staff. There is a financial impact that we have found with our families, not so much maybe in the secondary level, but our elementary students that if we have identified them as a close contact. You know, mom and dad don't necessarily feel comfortable leaving a kindergartner or a first grader at home for two weeks, and so they have to, at that point, take off work. Some parents don't have flexibility in their jobs or PTO time. So there is definitely a burden, a financial burden on some of our families. There's an awful lot of resources and time put into contact tracing during our school day. It's a very stressful part. It impacts our day all day long, and lots of different levels, from our principals to our assistants, to our clinics, and then obviously, our students, our families. So it's definitely something that we are watching very closely and trying to improve. I do want to touch a little bit on what our nurses in particular are seeing, because they are the ones that are making the calls home to parents. And over the last 18 or 19 months, I, they, I, for lack of better words, I mean, they have somewhat been verbally abused by some of our families, and I think it's time that it stops. These nurses are working around the clock. They have been our go-to for COVID questions for, during this entire pandemic, and they work all hours, all days of the week, and they have been treated very disrespectfully many times. And I am making a plea, if anyone's listening, that that stops immediately. The disrespect, the swearing, the hanging up, it needs to stop. These nurses are, they're great, great nurses. They have big hearts, and they are just following the protocols that are put in place to keep us safe. So I just want to make a note of that. I also want to extend my thank you to the families that have been kind and have shown us grace. They, those families do exist as well, but unfortunately, you know, sometimes the bad phone calls really ruin your day. So with all of that being said, with all of our stressors, our numbers indicate that we've had 100, we've, not indicated, we have had 128 positive cases. But what I just described, we've had to do 270 times this school year alone. We have had 270 students identified as close contacts. That's 270 phone calls, that's 270 traces that we have had to done, we've had to do, excuse me. Of those 270 students that we have sent home that are otherwise healthy students exhibiting zero symptoms, we have had less than 3% of them in quarantine exhibit symptoms and test positive. So there's an awful lot of time and resources that have been put into this, and very few of our students that we send home actually end up contracting the virus. So with that being said, we have been very cautious of our efforts, and we are doing everything we can to give our students the three feet of space on all aspects of the day to hopefully very much eliminate contact tracing in the buildings. There are a few spots that we cannot ever eliminate, for instance, the bus. You always, if you sit with someone on the bus, I can't take that away. But we can push desks apart, and so we are working through that, and I want to let you all know that we are trying very hard to limit how many students we have to quarantine, because we know the impact is not good. But that's one piece of how we could keep kids in the classroom. But the other one is actually going to come from parents. We, COVID exists, there's no denying COVID. But there's also other illnesses out there right now, and we have seen that in the clinics. And we have a lot of kids that are symptomatic, and we need parents to keep those kids home. We need to keep, not just COVID out of our buildings, but we need to keep other illnesses out of our buildings so we can keep our kids healthy to be at school. So parents, and we have a screener up here that Robin will share in a minute. It's very similar to what has, what we have been doing since the pandemic, but if in the event your child is showing symptoms, we are asking parents to stay home. There are rapid tests at the health department, Compass Park, that parents can go and get. It's a 15-minute test. It might take a little bit longer because they've been a little bit busier, but it is a drive-through service. So we are asking any student that is exhibiting symptoms to either get tested or go see their doctor for a diagnosis so they can return to school. And I think the screener's up there now. And then the next slide is just our current procedures. And so we are still encouraging hand washing. Again, stay home if you're sick. And social distancing, we, like I said, we are doing our best to give as much space as possible in our buildings. We are still doing a great job of disinfecting. Masks, although we are not mandating masks, we are still encouraging masks, just like the health department's recommendations are, and then, but they are required on our buses currently, and that is a federal mandate. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I have one question. Are we contact tracing because we like it or because the state mandates it to us?
The state mandates it to us.
So even if we hate it and think it's silly, that won't get you anything. It is a state mandate that we're required to do.
Yes, yeah, it is.
Okay, good job.
Also, there's a couple of things about the one mandate that we do have on the bus. That was extended until January. So we're going to continue to see masks required for all students that ride through this first semester and into the first days right now of second semester. We need to make sure that, once again, just as the nurses are dealing with, you know, people that get frustrated with them for calling, our bus drivers are the same way. And to be honest, we're short bus drivers. If you look across most districts right now, we're short bus, they're short bus drivers. But our bus drivers just need people to help and be respectful. You know, we live in a time right now where there's a lot of frustration, a lot of anger over a lot of things, but our bus drivers, our nurses, they're not the ones that created this world.
Right.
We need to make sure that we honor people for people. And sometimes I think we've lost sight of that. And then it's just the first person that gets an outlash, and people just say what they want. We just need to remember, we're all trying to do the very best we can.
Right.
And we may not like every rule that comes down. Amanda doesn't, Brooke doesn't, I don't. But we just need to remember, when we interact, we need to interact, please, in a respectful manner. Because I need bus drivers. I need our nurses to stay here. You know, I, we hear a lot that hospitals go on diversion right now. Well, when I reached out to some of my colleagues that are doctors, and I talked about the diversion and kind of what's happening, it's not necessarily that they don't have beds or they don't have some of those things. They don't have people to do the jobs. And I'm afraid that if our nurses get to the breaking point, we won't have anybody to do that job. And our goal in Franklin schools, and for all schools, I would say, is to be in school for 180 days for all kids. That's what we need. And you know, Amanda showed you some of the stats. The contact tracing, not many kids are testing positive after that. And if someone would say to her, "Well, what about last year? What happened last year?"
We, it was very, very few. We, I don't have the exact data, but I could probably count on one hand how many of our close contacts actually became positive last year. So we did have one incident at the end of the year, but it was, there was, it was completely separate circumstances that resulted in a few, but in the classroom setting, it was probably less than five.
You remember, most of last year, we spent secondary world of hybrid learning. We don't want to go back to hybrid learning. I know I talked to Mr. Ray House just today, and he's like, "Anything we can, we got to stay out of that." You're going to hear in just a few minutes about the COVID learning loss, both from the state's perspective and from Dr. Warland, as she's traveled with both our teachers and our students, looking at how to make sure we manage this. All those things need to come into play, and we need everybody to understand that when we look at putting forth our mitigation plans of, you know, separating kids more than three feet, washing hands, and taking mask breaks and different things, we need to continue to do that. You know, we have a new director at Johnson County Health Department. Dr. Qualls is new, starting in August. Dr. Mormon retired. And one of the things throughout our journey together, people could say, "Well, how'd you make that decision? Where'd you make that decision? With the data points, et cetera?" Dr. Mormon guided our journey last year, because we knew there were a lot of experts out there. And we also know that there are a lot of different views on what the experts think, and we continue to hear that. So we said, "We're going to go with the person that the state said you should go with," and that's the local county health director, so Dr. Mormon. As he retires, it now becomes Dr. Qualls in this journey that we're in. We understand there's a lot of conversations about what this person says or that person says. And I do listen to other people. Amanda listens to other people. I'm sure the board does, and the community does. But when it comes time for rule promulgation as we move forward, we need to understand that we, my doctorate's in educational leadership, Dr. Warland's, I think, the same. We're not medical doctors. We have to rely on the one person that we can count on, and that, right now, is Dr. Qualls. And so I would tell people, continue to reach out to him if you have further questions. We'll be glad to do it. We have several questions before us in our next coming up September board meeting for him that we're going to look at, because we're going to continue to talk about COVID, probably for the rest of this year, just like we did last year. We had COVID updates and understandings, and when we needed to make changes and modifications, we did. So we're going to continue to try to do that. You know, we want everybody to understand, we are being transparent. We want people to understand and see the data points. We've had a dashboard from the very, very beginning. This year, we continue to have our dashboard, but in tonight, we're going to, we're going to shift and talk about a different-looking dashboard to give some real-time updates on our data. Just like at the state, when you look at their data, if you go back to Regan Street or the health department's dashboard, it goes all the way back to March of this past, March 20 of 20. And you see all the cumulative data. So when you're looking at it, you're like, "Wow, I still see the 20 to 29-year-olds, they're the ones that were the most, they got COVID the most." And well, that's true from day one to day one. What's happening in real time? So one of the things that we've looked at as we have these first few days of school is what's the best way to communicate that? And then last Monday, Dr. Qualls did come out and have a conversation with area superintendents and saying, "We need a better pulse of what's going on. How is the positivity rate in each building, in that local building?" Not what the county color is, because the county color system actually no longer is there. The state's still using it, but if you remember, when Governor Holcomb had his executive orders, there were certain things attached to those that, as we traveled through. So when the state went to yellow, and the state went to orange, or state goes to red, what was going to happen? Now it's local decision. Those color codes are in there, it's all local decision. And so one of the things that's happening right now is that Dr. Qualls told us in our last board meeting, "You got to be ready to pivot. You got to be ready to make some changes and have everybody understand that we're trying and we're listening, and we need to be able to be prepared to make changes." And last year, when we made those changes, the board gave me the authority in real-time because of resolution, because we didn't know what was going on that first year of the pandemic. At the end of the year, we all thought things were going down. I mean, if we go back to that color code system, we were a blue county. We had low numbers of rates. And I think back to last July, when we started to see COVID go up again, if you remember, we had a special call board meeting the end of July, and we pushed school back two weeks to see what was going to go on. Well, here we are, a year removed, and some things are similar and some things are different. We were able to stay on time in school this year. But the Delta variant of the pandemic did not look at our start-of-school time to decide that when they were going to start to go. So we have to look and respond to that. And so at this point in time, I want to hit pause on kind of where we've been. I'll come back and talk a little bit more about our FCS data in a second, but I want to turn to Dr. Warland.
Wait, just a second.
Yep.
I just wanted to thank Amanda and all your nurses so much.
Becky.
Yeah, Becky, thank you guys so much. And I'm so sorry that people are misbehaving and not acting like grownups and being respectful, because isn't that one of the things that we try to teach our children? To work hard and be nice, right? North of elementary?
Well, thank you. And there are a lot of families that have been very good to us, but we, just takes one bad phone call and it seems like they happen every day now, so.
It's too bad.
It is too bad, because you're just trying to do your job. You're not doing, you know, it's not a personal thing for these people. It's just, let's, yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you for that.
I just want to thank you, because I understand how hard that is, so thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Warland?
Yes, I think every time we have a conversation about something in the district, something I've quickly learned is that we always harken back to individual student growth, one of our key guiding principles in the district. So you see learning loss, and for educators who are in the room, that's not always the phrase you want to see, right? Normally, we talk about student growth. So piggybacking on you, Kristy, I want to thank the teachers, the administrators, the volunteers, the assistants, if you're here.
Hey, this is Brian. Can someone move the mic a little closer?
If you're here tonight with us, my mic?
Yeah, he wants to hear from you.
Oh.
But you can't give it, you have to come, we have to move the phone closer to Brooke. Giving us the microphone won't.
Pardon our technical difficulties.
Can you switch seats with David, maybe?
Let's see, oh, it's a long cord. It's going to be alright.
This is so country, I love it.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
If anyone needs help moving furniture later, just reach out, we'll be glad.
We'll be here for you.
Hi, Brian, is that better?
Yeah, this is better, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have to move furniture?
Yes, you've got a keynote there. I just want to thank all of those groups that are here, because as you've, you've heard Amanda talk, you've heard Dr. Clendenning talk, these are tough times, they're hot times, and so just thanking all of those people that have helped navigate some of this, really, this new world, this new normal for our students. So I just want to start there on maybe more of a positive note. Many of you may have seen, I don't know if the board has read any of the information submitted by the state with regards to learning loss, that they've measured from the ILEARN assessment that we administer in grades three through eight. So it was required last year in the spring for us to administer that statewide assessment across the entire state of Indiana. And they were really trying to get a sense of what we're seeing. Now with the results, and as you know from just the activity in the state, we had districts that were virtual most of the year, part of the year, kids quarantined in hybrid. So the state has calculated that really, on average, kids were out of classrooms for over a year, so over 180 days. And the loss, and even some of the anecdotal work I have done with some of the teachers in the district, they're estimating in some content areas, in some student groups, the loss two to three years' worth of learning. And so I had a teacher tell me the other day that one of the measures they were using in their classroom, seventh graders, they were, students were at about the fifth grade level in that particular area. And Franklin is not alone. What I'm sharing with you is both statewide data and conversations I've had with teachers and our own data. We have also been told by the state, because of the, well, the issues, the struggles around academic health, academic growth, as well as mental health associated with COVID over the last 18-plus months, that we are no longer recommended. We should not be comparing our 2019 data to our 2021 data. So the state is re-establishing the baseline for student performance using the 2021 data because of the learning loss. Normally, when we measure learning in our buildings, we're looking at growth, right? So it might be minimal, or it might be extraordinary. What you want to see is growth. With COVID, in general, we did not experience that, and it's probably not shocking. We talked to teachers today in FCTA meeting this afternoon, and one of the questions I asked was, "What are you seeing in your classrooms with your students?" And there were some stories about academic gaps. I've heard that both in that meeting and outside of that meeting. But there were also conversations around social skills, conversations around students' lack of ability to resolve conflict, to relate to one another, to be kind, to really get back in this routine of school. Stamina to make it through the day, to be in an academic learning mode all day long. So I think it's important as we think about the environment, what the nurses are experiencing, how learning is happening in our buildings, the environment in our buildings, that we continue to commend those who are, who are really going the extra mile. And at the same time, no, and I think Dr. Clendenning said this earlier, we're all here because we care about kids, and we want to create the best environment that we can in our buildings to ensure that learning is happening. I'm happy to answer questions if I can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just some other FCS data as we start to head into discussion on some of the changes that could come our way. One of the things that we've talked about is making sure that we have everybody's perspective. One of the great things about our guiding principles, that we have five of them, and collaboration is a big part. So I talked to Mr. Lamb earlier, and he said, "How are the teachers feeling? And how about the administrators?" And so I polled the administrators individually, and I asked FCTA, which is the Franklin Teachers Association, to ask their teachers, "How are they doing? Do they feel safe? What are their thoughts on mitigation?" And those things. And so we just met with the teachers just a couple of hours ago to get information about that. And so I would say that from the building principals' perspective, they reiterate over and over again, "We got to stay in school." They reiterate that close contact tracing is causing significant stress. They said, "If you could do anything and eliminate that, they would be all in." When I asked them specifically about the mask mitigation that we presently have, we say, "It's recommended, but mom and dad, you make the decision. Where, how do you feel?" The principals were eclectic, like we have, that we are right now in the community and throughout the land. A couple of them said they would mask, put masks on, and the majority said they liked the journey that we're on. They like giving the kids and the parents the choice so they can focus on the education side. I would say that the teachers reiterated much the same voice today. When we met with them and talked with them, we had each building rep talk from their, their building's perspective about, "How's it going? What do you think?" And we had high school, middle school, intermediate, and elementary buildings there. I think that at the secondary level, there was overwhelming support to keep the present journey we're on with regard to masking. The elementary, many of them said the same thing, they liked the journey. They also liked what the metric is going to be shared in just a few minutes. They liked the new metric that the Johnson County Health Department came up with of the 2% positive rate. They felt like that was the least, something tangible that they could see, so that they would know when and if we had to pivot. The teachers overall felt, you know, safe at school. Last year, there was a lot of anxiety about what was going to happen, how we were going to do things. And overwhelmingly, they said that they do feel safe. They want to make sure kids are learning. They also then reiterated some of the things that Brooke commented about learning loss, that they see the kids struggling and struggling for a lot of reasons, and trying to get back into a normal routine is something we must do. One of the things that someone's asked us in the data journey is, "If you put masks on, can you stop quarantining and contact tracing?" The answer is unequivocally no. I actually reached out to some other area superintendents, and I actually had an article that was sent through, it was a very good article, of another school in the northern part of the state that's doing something different. And actually, Dr. Warland's relatives go to that school, so we asked them, "How are you doing it?" Because they decided to do contact tracing and then put the responsibility back on the parents to say yes or no to go to school. And if they said, "Yes, I'm going to come to school," it all fell to the nurses every single day from that contact tracing to decide if they were going to stay at school or not. So it's still contact tracing, it's still looking at what they're doing, but that was what that is. The other school districts are doing just what we're doing, three feet, looking at how they can continue to spread kids out and making those in-flight modifications. We're continuing to encourage cohorting of kids, both with masks on and with masks off, so that the kids sit together. Sometimes lunch, it's a little more difficult when we spread those kids out. So when you look back at the data, like, what do our teachers feel? What do our administrators feel? They feel, I think, comfortable in the journey we're on right now. They also know that we're prepared to make changes, when we need to make changes. They also know that we're prepared to make changes, when we need to make changes, to meet the needs of our kids, to keep kids in school space and safe. As you recall, when Dr. Qualls came here and spoke, he reiterated we needed to be prepared to shift. A neighboring school started school a little bit ahead of us, and their virus impact was much greater early on. And then we kind of, kind of watched what they were doing. Well, I will tell you, we, the superintendents all met yesterday at four o'clock. We're all seeing the exact same thing in terms of virus numbers bigger. So someone says, well, how much, what's the difference? Amanda and I talked about this the other day. So I said, I'm going to go back and look. January of last year, when it was really hot for us, remember, we had put the high school back in hybrid right before Christmas break in early, early November, and we said, we're going to stay this way, and we're going to see what it was going to look like. So I looked at January 4th through January 20th, and I looked at August 4th through August 20th. And I said, how are we doing? What's the difference? January 4th to January 20th, we had 73 cases of COVID. August 4th to August 20th, we have 97 cases of COVID. Then you saw Amanda's number just a few minutes ago of 128. So you can see that the virus definitely is continuing. But one of the things that Dr. Qualls stated to us, and he was in our, he was on the campus on Friday. He went to Creekside Elementary and a couple other places, and Union, and then met with Jeff Sewell and Amanda, myself during the day. What Dr. Qualls reiterated, said was, schools, you're not the community spreader. You're not being the driving force of the COVID variant spread. Another change, it's really significant that everybody, that we all need to understand that at 2:20 for the elementaries and, you know, 3 o'clock roughly for all the other schools, we're leaving school and there's no mask mandate like we had before. So when I gave you those data points of 73 and 97, remember last January, we limited everything. When our girls and boys were playing basketball, and the girls were having a great season, no, grandma, mom and dad got to watch. It was locked down everywhere with masks everywhere. And when we look at our numbers now, we're open, open in everything. We don't have any limits on any extracurricular. This auditorium's going to be packed sometime soon with fall, musical. So when you look at those numbers, there's definitely difference. But we also had difference in the other things going on. And so I think as we look at, what should we do? Well, I think looking at Johnson County Health, next slide please.
Can I ask you a question?
Yep.
I mean, is it, is it safe to assume though that January is a time where people are more ill than August?
I only looked at COVID to COVID, but Amanda can speak to the other January question.
Yeah, I mean typically that is, you know, in the middle of flu season, and you have a lot of respiratory illnesses in the winter months, yeah, you usually do see more illnesses.
So we would, we would anticipate then that in this January, if things go at the rate they're going now, we'd be much higher than we are in August. That's like the natural flow of viruses and like, whatever. I just, I mean, I think this is the, a good comparison, and, but I think it's, I think the seasonal piece we need to keep in, as part of this analysis too.
Thank you, and we'll definitely, we'll definitely continue to track that and many other data points. One thing about the Delta variant that we're hearing is that it actually has a pretty short shelf life. I've heard anywhere from burning out sometime in early September to October to November. It's kind of in that timeframe. And then things start to go downhill. And if you look across the world, it seems like that's what's taking place. But obviously, we don't know. I mean, I go back to, we have to rely on our experts to tell us kind of what that looks like and how that feels. And remember, when we started this during the pandemic, everything was to flatten the curve so that the hospitals could ramp up and prepare and move forward. Well, now, it continues to be that way, that we're trying to still honor the hospital and the workers. We have gotten better, right, at being able to control it. But as I said earlier, teacher, there's not enough workers. I mean, Amanda could, Amanda could leave us and get a $20,000 bonus.
Please don't.
So Becky could do the same. I mean, the demand is out there. So we have to continue to remember that, that we're, we're working not only in the COVID space, but other viruses are coming. Amanda said to us the other day that we're seeing more common colds, flus, other stuff that we, that we didn't see last year. And there's maybe some reasons for that, but it's, it's here. You know, we've spent a year apart from each other. But that, that's what's happened. And now we're all back together and rubbing elbows and playing games and doing that stuff, and we're seeing some changes. So Johnson County Health Department said, be ready to pivot. And on the 16th, he came, we got this guidance. It is strongly recommended that universal masking occurs inside the K-12 buildings, regardless of vaccination status. When the positivity rate exceeds 2% in any one building, mask will be worn until the positivity rate drops below 1%. So this came out, and we asked a couple clarifying questions. I know Amanda had one, and I asked, are you talking about student population, or are you talking about everybody in the building? Because actually, that would make a big difference. If we look at Mr. Ray House building here, we're going to add, you know, another 150 people or so with part-time workers and support staff, teachers. So on Friday, Dr. Qualls came back and said, no, it's just the student population that we're talking about, for all buildings, student population. Well, that changes the metric for us. And that's where I came to the board and said, you know, we need to have this conversation. And so on Monday, we posted for this, this meeting in a work session, and, you know, Mr. Wagner, right, most work sessions, we have this conversation and, and we're meeting in the LGI room, whatever, but we knew people were interested in this topic. And the reason we did Monday to today is we have to give 48 hours notice for open door lock. And this is a special call meeting, which we all have the ability to do, and it's about helping our kids and helping our school do the right thing. And so one of the things that you're going to, you're going to hear in just a little bit is that I think that we need to continue to hold true to what we've been doing, and that is, stay true to our local experts. We need to honor what they say in terms of the journey that we're on. And that's strongly recommended, you know, is something that we need to adhere to. So tonight, when we go to the special call board meeting, I'm going to ask the board to adopt that. And we're looking at individual buildings. We're not looking at broad strokes across the entire school. So I think if I were sitting over there, you'd think, okay, well, how, how are you going to do this? How are you going to make sure that it's only 2% this building or what? So I'm going to show you what the new dashboard's going to look like at this time. So right now, you will see what percentage dashboard looks like for our school as of right this moment, as of today. Yep, sorry, you guys can't see, so. In our old dashboard, we had aggregate data, number of cases, and it was accumulated total to get down to 128. But that really didn't tell a clear picture of what was going on. Because in that 10-day cycle, the kids would come back and, and get ready to go to school. So in this dashboard, I want to first hit pause and thank Melissa McCain and Ray Lane. They put their professional lives on hold at their other, for us, to help us create this world so that we can share information with parents about what's going on. So Mr. Sewell, please make sure you, that you take that back and you share that with them. They're just outstanding educators and leaders. At one point yesterday, we're working on 240 different lines of code to make this thing happen. Our enrollment is based on the enrollment of that day. Now, as we get closer into September, there's a date that we set our enrollment because of ADM, and that's fixed for the rest of the year. But right now, it's set on what's happening. So we have 49, I just looked, it was 4971, and we're at 4962. We've had a few kids move in and out and some of that. So when you look at our percent, and you're thinking, okay, Creekside Elementary, they're at 1.18% of their population is COVID positive. And that's student population. Needham, 1.73. But you'll notice Northwood, Union and Webb are at zero. They do not have a student in their buildings presently with COVID. Now, obviously, it's subject to change at any time. But that's where they are today. Today, for the first time, CBIS went over to the two threshold. And if the board were to adopt the rule, the mitigation strategy that I'm, that I'm going to recommend, CBIS would wear masks starting tomorrow. And people say, well, isn't that a quick turnaround? Well, you remember, every kid has to have a mask to ride the bus. And I know parents bring their kids to school, but we will make that notification if the board moves in that direction. And you see the high school and middle schools at .85 and .82 respectively. This dashboard would continue to show every day so parents could see it and share information. Would also allow us, one of the things that we happened to see last year, when we did set up benchmarks in our phase development of phase one all the way to phase five, there was a lot of anxiety because a calendar date would come, we were going to make a decision, and people would be like, oh no, what's going to happen? Is it going to change? Is it not going to change? This tells us clearly what's going to happen. The color codes are intended to give also a visual warning and opportunity for us to see. And remember, so if the board adopts this, then CBIS would need to go below 1% before they would get back to the Franklin School's mitigation strategy of choice. Mom and dad make the decision about masking. The remaining items of washing your hands, you know, three feet apart, go outside, ventilation, those type of things will remain. So with that, I just want to reiterate the words of Dr. Qualls, and he said, you got to be ready to pivot. As I said before in my conversations with a lot of people, no one ever told us the playbook on how to live in a pandemic. Guarantee you, I had zero classes. And we're absolutely trying to do the very best for all kids. And I know there, there are people in the community that will say, really? And have questions about that. But we really do want the same thing. We want kids in school for 100 E.D. school. We want them to be a part and interact with their teachers. We don't want them to be home for quarantining and isolation. And we believe that also mom and dad are a big part of our journey here. As I've said before, over and over again, many times, mom and dad are the best educators. And we partner alongside them to make that happen. And we believe right now, I believe right now, that the recommendations, after a lot of input and consultation with my admin team and teachers, our mitigation strategies are preparing us to do that. Be ready to pivot, but also be ready to take some steps forward. So in just a few minutes, Mr. Wagner, when we go to a special call board meeting, I'm going to ask that the board adopt the 2% mitigation strategy for masking. That CBIS is the first school, but it would be for each individual school. And as I said before, on September 13th, we're going to have a whole nother presentation on COVID. There've been several questions asked about the data points and different things, we're going to gather those. But tonight, I'm asking for one thing. And as the recommendation that is, that was written to us back last week.
On Needham, it was like 1.7 something? How many kids does it take to get across?
Uh, Needham is, let me check.
One more kid?
I think it's one more, yeah.
And Union would be at 2% with one kid?
No, with three.
Three kids?
Yeah.
God bless the Ramblers, all day, every day. COVID knows they're going to go to Union, I think. You guys are safe.
Yeah, so when you're looking at raw numbers, I mean, we have that kind of on the back end, you know, to look at. CBIS is between 16 and 17, is that right, to get us over 2%?
Uh, 15, I believe.
15? Do you have the right?
Yeah, I can pull it up real quick.
And these are legitimate positive cases, not contact tracing?
Yes, these are confirmed positive cases that are currently out of our build, like, they're not in our building right now, yeah.
But, but note, some of them could be on day eight, day, or day nine. And so tomorrow, that number could change because they're going to go off. But other kids could come on too, right? So that's, that's one of the things you're looking at. One of the things that obviously with FERC and, and the requirements put forth, no one's identity is ever going to be seen. These are just numbers that the public won't see that. Amanda gets to see it, you know, principals and myself, Dr. Warland.
And you roll off when what happens to you?
So like today at Custer Baker, we have 17. That, so that put us over the 2%. So, but actually tomorrow, we would go under 2% because four of those students actually come back to school.
That's 14, that's the 14-day thing?
And, no, when you're positive, you isolate for 10 days. Yes, and so, but we, it is set up for 14 days with it, once you hit the 2%, because that is the incubation period. So we feel like if our, if we meet that 2% threshold, that we have enough of that viral load in our buildings, that we want to give two weeks for that mitigation, or for the incubation period, to kind of mimic a close contact trace essentially, is kind of how Dr. Qualls explained it to us. And then at that point, we would hope to see our numbers start to drop at that point.
And so you'll see that fluctuation that Amanda talked about, that tomorrow, four kids come off, well, they would be under. But if the board adopts it now, in my, they're, they're over.
Right.
And so we need to understand that. So you'll continue to see that, and so mom and dads will see that.
And will it be a day by day? I mean, they keep it like on a Thursday where another one, under 1%? And so people get alerts for Friday? Or will it be like a weekly?
We should, if, and Jeff can answer this, we should know about a week in advance, like, because right now, I can go out as far as our, our, the furthest isolation is. So we'll know several days in advance what we feel that number is. But I mean, we should be able to predict it with, in a few days.
But the way that it's written right now, you're correct, after 1%. Now, Dr. Qualls did say, you need to understand, there's probably some lag time in there. But I think right now for us, as we enter into this new paradigm of mitigation, we're going to look at that and say, okay, we're at, we're at this. And we know there's going to be that two weeks because of the viral load and because of where we are. So CBIS for the next two weeks would be in that, no matter if they get down to, you know, 1.8. And even if they were to fall to below 1 in this present world, because he did say that that's what it was going to be recommended. And he said, he sees it will take a school about that length of time. But we'll definitely keep sharing with mom and dad and looking at that information, and we'll continue to track the data in and around. I will tell you that Delta variant is not just here. I talked to my colleagues across Johnson County, we're all feeling it. And actually, I'd say we're, we're kind of hanging in there doing, based on our numbers, pretty well compared to some of the other schools that I'm hearing.
Okay, so my, I had a question, and my kind of went sideways here. So 2% and even if, so what you're saying is, you're going to have to, the parents are going to have to think, okay, well, we're wearing masks for the next two weeks, even if we get below the 1% in that time?
Yeah, it's a Yeah, it's a two week.
Just keep that as a, as a.
But it'll probably be hard to drop that quickly, right? Because it's
Right, right.
The period of time you're out.
But it's just good so everybody can say in their mind, okay, my school, once they go, yeah, we're going to be on there for at least two weeks and then.
Correct.
Amanda, how many cases are you getting like each day right now?
Today, I think we got 10 or 11. And we've, we've been in the double digits for several days now. Well, I mean, we've been in school how many days? We have 128. So we've definitely have seen a significant increase in cases compared to pretty much any time last year.
And is it the majority in the intermediate middle school age range or is, I mean, I know Needham got hit hard right at the get-go.
CBIS has the most. It has this raw count.
Right.
And then, you know, high school, middle school, and then it'll be the rest of everybody else.
Thank you.
That's how it would kind of play out. I also want to make sure there's this clarifying point. If this rule gets adopted, this goes into effect for everybody that goes into the building. It's not just kids. Even though we're looking at that the numerator and denominator being kid-based, the masking is for everybody. So teachers, principals, Dr. Warland goes into the building, cafeteria workers, all workers that are assigned to that building.
No matter your vaccination status.
That's right. No matter the vaccination status.
We'll make that clear.
You are wearing a mask for that period of time. We are, we continue to provide masks for, for kids who don't have them or forget them or whatever. That's part of the state's PPE program as well as we've continued to get more. We had a local dentist donate several thousand dollars, remember last year, of N95s, because they couldn't use them for some reason, but we got them. We're about out of those, but those are things that we will provide. But we want to encourage everybody to, you know, be prepared, you know, as we travel this road. I mean, I hope we don't continue, but I would just go back to be ready to pivot.
So if, for, let's say CBIS, you know, they're going to be two weeks, that's only for indoor activities, like, would that include sports or anything like that?
It would be just the school day indoors. So if a class wanted to go outside and have class under the tent or on the track, they could definitely take their mask off there. This would just be indoors during the school day.
And I want, I want to tell you, I want to pull that thread just a little bit further because I think it's probably being thought about out here in the crowd. And I, I think, I was like, well, what happens if the middle school or high school gets to 2%? Does that mean after school, when the girls volleyball team's playing, everybody masks? That's not what this says. And he clarified that. This is only during the school day that we would be requiring masks. And that no time would we be requiring masks on the outside.
And the rationale is because at volleyball games, people are more spread out?
I can't speak on the rationale. I'm just, we're just reiterating what was, what was shared with us, that this would apply for the school day. And I think it was more so for the impact of learning and making sure that we can have kids in class.
And the 2% that we're seeing in a building, that is an increase from what you were seeing last year in buildings?
Well, we didn't track it quite like this last year. So it's really hard for me to compare. I mean, we had a total of roughly, we had a total of 364 cases last year. 90-something were staff and teachers. So, I mean, so that leaves out 260 student cases. And we've had 120 student cases right now, because we've had seven or eight staff members. So, yeah, I mean, just in that simple bit of math, I would say, yes, this is higher than what we have seen. But we are, we're tracking it a little bit different. So I don't have like an actual comparison, but it definitely feels easier.
We have more kids in school, in the buildings right now.
Yeah, yeah, we, actually, we have a lot more kids in school. The other thing that Dr. Qualls has said to us, we are not going to mask our way out of the Delta variant. In his professional opinion, sharing with us, the vaccination is the way out. The second thing I would say is the teachers ask us, are we going to require teachers to get vaccinated? And the answer is no. We are not. Now, state law did put some things in place for us. We're not allowed to ask for vaccination status. Now, on the quarantine side of life, if a person does have a vaccination and they tell Amanda, they do get blocked from being quarantined.
Yeah, they're exempt from quarantine if they're fully vaccinated, which is two weeks past your last vaccination.
But just because, I mean, the state can have different, different rules for what is required to be a teacher. So we're just talking about what we're doing at, at Franklin Schools. We're not saying that that can ever be a thing in the future if the governor whoever did it.
Yeah, well, absolutely, absolutely.
I don't want us to.
We have, I mean, the kids come to school every year with required vaccinations. And, and was it, did you say, I mean, 98%?
Typically, yeah, we're a 98% compliance with our kindergarten amisations annually. So.
And then the kids get them in sixth grade, they get them as they go to ninth grade, and the 12th graders get one more before they, you know, leave us. So vaccinations are a part of us and, but when we're talking about COVID-19, that's not what we're talking about. And if the governor does so change or the state health department, then Franklin Schools would continue to follow that. That's exactly right.
Well, thank you. And Amanda, you did not sign up to come sit in these meetings and have us grill you in front of all these people, but you are doing awesome. And you can clap, somebody clap. And this is a nightmare, but you have, you have just dominated. And I'm so proud of you. And I'm so grateful you work here. And may God bless you and your family for a thousand generations because you deserve every bit of it. We're so grateful for you.
Well, thank you. But, I mean, I, I work with an amazing team and Franklin Schools is a great place to be. So I definitely feel that we are in this together. We have been from day one and we're going to finish strong. Hopefully, this is last year of it.
One way or another, it's going to end, you know? It ends us or we end it or something.
Before you close, I, I also want to just praise Amanda and Becky and all the other nurses. They're, they're superstars. Because they get, they get put out front every single day.
Every single day.
When COVID started and no one really knew what to expect and, and everything, they were there. And they've been there from day one. So Amanda, you, I'm sure glad you said yes to stay on our team and not go for that $20,000 bonus.
It's just money. Like, what are you going to do with it?
Exactly. Yeah. All right. So we'll take, I'll come back with the formal recommendation in a few minutes.